Okay, welcome everybody. This is the meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals in Cohasset at seven o'clock. It's Tuesday, September thirteenth at seven oh one, seven oh two. We're conducting this as always recently as a Zoom virtual meeting. Sitting as a Board of Appeals are myself, Woody Chitica's Chair, Dave McMorris, who is slightly occupied as Vice Chair, but he's here. Charlie Higginson is our third full member. And then Associate Members, Matt Watkins, Lee Darst and
Where? I thought I s-
No, but who did I see our other member or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, Michael's here.
Okay, I guess he's just not on my screen. I'm sorry. And and sitting in are John Hallen, our Building Inspector in the town, or Building Commissioner, and Cassandra Thayer, Clerk of this Board. So we have one, two, two new hearings, a couple of continuances, and actually three new hearings, and then a deliberation on forty-sixth Border Street. So we might as well get into our agenda, which is always sequenced in the order in which we receive filings, et cetera. The first of which is forty-nine Border Street down in the harbor filed by Peter and Carolyn Wieriski, who requested a continuance. And I would make a motion to accept that request for continuance unless there is a discussion associated with it, but.
Attorney DeLisi is here and he has his hand raised if you-
Okay, sure. Let's call him. We'll pause my motion and invite Attorney DeLisi to speak.
Hello, everybody. You're gonna be sick of hearing from me tonight. I just wanted to explain the reason for the request of continuance, and I think I submitted a letter that requested the continuance to October. I'm going to revise that to request it to be till November. What is happening is we are exploring ways that we could utilize this property in a manner that would be appropriate for this family, which would be limited in height to two stories as opposed to three, and would have a more traditional design. The the rub with that is that our application will be amended to request an alternative to the existing application, which is a variance. Because by doing work to kind of keep the height down in the velocity zone that requires it to be elevated will require a variance. So we can talk about that another day, but I wanted to explain the reasoning and request the continuance to November. We'll be filing a revised application and plans prior to the October filing deadline for that November hearing.
Okay. And actually, you raise a a related point in that our traditional meeting date of the second of the first Tuesday of the month cannot happen because that's Election Day on the eighth. So we will most likely, Jeff, be meeting on Tuesday, the fifteenth, but we'll deal with that before we close the-
It is what it is. Thank you.
Right. So I'd make a motion to continue this hearing at forty-nine Border Street until the November ZBA meeting.
I second. Charles Higgins on second.
Okay. All in favor? Would you check a guy?
Dave McMorris, I-
Charlie Higgins, I-
Lee Darst, I-
Michael Dickey, I-
Matt Watkins, I-
Okay, unanimously voted. Okay, so we're second is five oh eight Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Peter Capizoli, who had the use of a hydraulic lift in the storage shed. This has been continued and continued and continued, and he has requested a continuance. Again, I'd like to suggest to the board that I will, not tonight, but I will at our next hearing move to close the hearing. This has gone on long enough. He can go through the process of a new filing. I'm I will, I believe, depending on your concurrence, not give him a denial without prejudice. Just plain old denial. He can go through the planning board routine before he comes to us again. But the and in the interim, he will be under certain restrictions. I just don't see any reason to continue this. We're kind of entering year two almost. So I would, is there any discussion about this or continuing this until our October hearing on the fourth?
I'm just a note, Woody. I think that letter was requesting continuance until November, not October.
How's the board feel? Want to let him continue it till November and then we'll shut it down if he's not ready?
Yeah, I think that's fair. He's aware that that's going to be his last date.
Right.
May as well give him an extra month to get it ready.
Okay. All right. So I'd make a motion to continue this hearing until our November meeting. We have not yet set the date. It's but it's likely to be the fifteenth. So I've made a motion, Charlie. Were you seconding it?
Second again.
Okay, moved to seconded. Woody Chitica, I-
Dave McMorris, I-
Matt Watkins, I-
Lee Darst, I-
Michael Dickey, I-
Okay, the third is also a request for a continuance. The Sostitos at five thirty-four Beechwood Street for a general store and two apartments. Cassandra, did they again request this for two months and so on? Two months?
Two months until November.
Okay, so we have those three. I would, any discussion? Anybody wishing to speak on this one? Okay, so I'd make a motion to continue the five thirty-four Beechwood Street hearing until our November meeting.
Seconded.
Okay, moving seconded. Woody Chitica, I-
Dave McMorris, I-
David, so I'm-
Lee Darst, I-
Michael Dickey, I-
Matt Watkins, I-
Okay, well, I voted unanimously. Now, the next, we have two, we have three other hearings. The next two, I am going to recuse myself. And Dave, would you mind taking over the chairmanship? And if you're not well enough, maybe we can turn to Matt. But oh, what was why that was a staged cough if I remember.
Matt, I would prefer if you would.
That's okay. Charlie, would that be okay with you if we just turn it over to Matt to be our I guess Chair Pro Cam or something like that? So I'm going to log out and Matt will take over for the next two hearings. I'm going to blank my screen. I don't know how you're going to get a hold of me unless I I keep the sound on, but I'm not going to be paying attention. So with that, I'm going to at least go stop video. Cassandra, should I also do? Well, I'm going to be unmute, but I don't know if I should log out entirely of this hearing or not.
Um.
I think we determined, Woody, as long as you have your camera off and you're not dissipating.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as your camera and your sound is off.
Yeah, I'll turn both off. Then then I can come back when the when when my set of hearings opens up again. Okay, so-
We can all wave at you or something.
You'll do something.
Get you to come back.
Okay, so the video's off and
All right. So the next next hearing on the agenda is one sixty-seven Sawyer Street filed by Christopher and Grace Pescatori, seeking to construct a second story expansion over the existing one-story rear wing of one sixty-seven Sawyer Street. Cassandra, do you want to bring forward the participants?
Working on that right now.
Good evening. John Toriyaki, Toriyaki Architectural Design. We are working with the homeowners, Chris and Grace Pescatori, for this addition project. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to share my screen to go over the drawings that most of which you have.
Yeah, please do.
Just to give you a little context, one sixty-seven Sawyer Street is a property located as shown with the adjacent properties to the southwest of the property. There are actually two driveways, so there are really no houses located within this zone. And across the street from this house, the houses are set back quite a bit. But this particular house is historic, so it's fairly close to the road. But the portion that we are focusing on is an existing one-story wing at the back of the house outlined in red here. And basically, what we would like to do is take that existing one-story wing and turn it in into a a two-story piece. So expand the second floor over that existing footprint as shown in red here. This is the property site plan prepared by Ross Engineering. So that's really the only relief that we are requesting. There's really no footprint change or any other work being proposed. I'm just going to go right into architectural drawings to show you the the massing and floor plans of the this piece, sorry. Just a few photographs of the house. I'm sure you've seen it driving on Sawyer Street. This is the front of the house. And then the 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 south or the the west side, I should say, showing that rear wing right here with my where my cursor is. So we would like to take that roof off and add a second story expansion matching this existing E line here. That's basically the project. Again, once again, the same side, we're basically extending this wall towards the back of the house over this wing. We submitted some non-conforming areas and facade area calculations. I'm not going to go through these each, but graphically, it shows you the portion of the first floor that's non-conforming as it exists with the zoning setbacks. The portion of the second floor that's not conforming up. The reason for this cutout is that part of this roof you know, is sloping. So we only highlighted the portion that exceeds the the area. Non-conforming existing facade areas. And this is the southwest facade, which is really the main facade to focus on. So I'm actually going to just split my screen to show you the existing and proposed side by side, which I think may be helpful. So the the top of the screen shows the, I'm sorry, these are the same. Sorry. Okay, the top of your screen shows the existing southwest facade with about eight hundred and nine square feet of non-conforming facade area. And we're basically proposing this piece here, which represents about ninety-four square feet. So it's roughly twelve percent increase. And a rough volumetric calculation, again, a very rough cubic foot calculation represents about a four percent increase, about five hundred three cubic feet of mass proposed. And the existing non-conforming mass is roughly twelve thousand six hundred cubic feet. Again, very kind of simplified cubic feet aspect. Otherwise, there's really no change in the non-conforming area. Because the front facade is already entirely non-conforming, and we're adding behind it. So we're not really changing it. And the rear facade, this slice is already non-conforming as shown. And what we're adding really makes no change in terms of facade area. It just adds more volume here as I showed showed on the other slide. This rear line represents the the roof slopes, just trying to blend in with the existing slope and create a simple gable. Otherwise, from a floor plan perspective, this will be a basically a bedroom expansion, creating a small master bedroom with a master bath and a walk-in closet inside that expansion. So that's essentially the the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thanks, John. Board members, open it up to us first. Anybody have any questions?
Any of the neighbors submit comments or have they discussed, showed the plans to their neighbors?
Yes, the Pescator has let me know that they discussed it with the neighbor behind them. So that will be to the north. I believe the neighbor located here. I don't know their names, but they did tell me that particular neighborhood was receptive. And they were supportive. We don't have any other comments or input from the other neighbors.
Charles Higgins, not specifically on this project, but I noticed that the plot plan does not show the adjacent houses or any dimensions of it doesn't affect my decision in this case, but I do put in a plea that people applicants do include the location of the neighbors, because that is important to think to consider when you're talking about extension of a non-conformity.
Yes, and I do remember that request from a past project and we just couldn't get these guys to update this in time. But that's why I attempted to show this aerial to at least give you a little bit of a context. Even though it doesn't show it dimensionally, this is the scale twenty feet is about this long right here. Just to give you a sense of the the context in that there are no houses in this entire area. And the closest house is really one sixty-three over here. But but we don't have exact dimensions. So I do understand the need to at least show that house on this floor, on this plan.
Yeah. So as a follow-up, John, could you submit a site plan that that does have that on there? I mean, no, Charlie said it doesn't impact the decision, but it's probably good for us to have as part of the the file with the project. Is that something you want to see, Charlie?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Does any other board members have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Cassandra, do we have anyone from the public has any questions?
I think everybody here is an applicant or they're representatives.
Okay. Yeah. So, John, if you could just follow up with that site plan and you know, the end of the night, we'll make a make an assignment on this one. So I'll make a motion that we continue until our October hearing.
Charles Higgins.
Okay, all in favor? Matt Watkins, I-
Dave McMorris, I-
Lee Darst, I-
Michael Dickey, I-
Okay, great. Meetings continue till October.
Thank you. We'll submit that plan in the meantime.
Okay, great. Thanks, John.
I think the next hearing also has John.
Yes.
So I'm going to keep him on.
Okay. The next hearing is for one twenty-four South Main Street filed by Chloe and Andrew Patton, seeking to construct a rear story addition located within the floodplain with a new rear open deck. At one twenty-four South Main Street, special permit pursuant to three hundred nine point eleven. And we'll open the hearing. I see John Toriyaki is representing the applicant. And John, do we need to bring anyone else forward?
Yes, Andrew Patton, who I believe is also in the audience, but I will be primarily discussing the project. John Toriyaki, again, Toriyaki Architectural Design. And for full disclosure, Chloe Patton is my sister-in-law as well. So this is kind of a family project. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And just go through briefly why we're here. And Andrew and I would be happy to answer any questions. So this is basically a filing of under section nine point eleven, construction in the floodplain. The the site plan indicates the the existing house shaded, and then this dark darker outline represents the addition that we're proposing and the addition of a new deck that we're proposing. Whereas everything that's lightly shaded is the existing. So it's basically a rear addition project that conforms with all other aspects of zoning, including setbacks and coverage. We are just constructing in the floodplain. And by the way, I should mention that this project recently went in front of the Conservation Commission for a notice of intent, and it was approved. An order of conditions were issued. And this is really our next step to get the special permit under section nine point eleven. This house existing is a historic house. And what we would like to do as part of this project is to relocate all of the utilities in the existing basement to the upper level and make the basement fully flood compliant by adding flood vents and also the rear addition that we are proposing would be a crawl space with flood vents. And the the added deck would be on sonotubes and it would be impervious. I'm sorry, pervious. That said, I'm just going to go with the architectural drawings. And we can come back to the site plan as needed. Just some photographs of the existing house. Again, it's really a rear addition project. So we are adding a a two-story mass, part of which is one-story combination here off the back and basically rebuilding this deck slightly farther back. Existing floor plan. And I'm just going to go to this drawing, which is really the the one that pertains to this the most. Showing the on the on-ground footprint of our foundation walls and sonotube foundations totaling approximately sixty-six square feet, which is under the three hundred square foot or the twenty percent increased limitation for the flood permit, special permit, the language. And this will be, like I said, incorporated with flood vents and be a flood compliant foundation. And I'm just going to show you a couple of other drawings showing the floor plan of the expansion proposed and the new deck and stairways. And then just to give you a sense of the the architectural aspect, even though we're not here because of this tonight, but just showing a side profile of the rear addition proposed here with the hip roof. So very much in keeping with the existing architectural language. And as I said, it's conformant. It will be conforming with zoning in other aspects. So I think that pretty much summarizes it. I'm happy to go back to the site plan or answer any questions that the board has.
Okay, thanks, John. I can open up to the board. One more, I guess, one question I had when I was taking a look at it last night was I know you filed under nine eleven and I was at first I was wondering why why we why you weren't filed under nine seven H versus nine eleven. And I don't know, David, I might even need some help on it. But I was wondering if nine, because the the home is conforming, right? The, you know, in all aspects, you're really in front of us just because of the floodplain.
That's correct. That's correct. Although I'm just going to go back to the application to see if there was anything non-conforming. That's correct. Yes, the house there's a non-conforming shed on the property. But other than that, the house itself conforms to setbacks. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, my read on nine eleven was that it was more for non-conforming, which made me take a look at nine seven H and wonder, you know, should we be you know, and again, it's just, you know, grading within the floodplain that we're taking a look at. But I'm wondering if we should be checking the boxes of nine seven H or if nine elevens the appropriate one, I guess that's maybe more of a question to the board members.
So I don't have an immediate answer for that. I think we took the non-conformity of the shed making the property non-conforming, but but it's up to the board to to determine which section is more appropriate.
And the order of conditions that you had from CONCOM is based on the there were no modifications to the plan that was presented to us like in our packets or tonight?
That's correct. It's the same plan, same footprint.
Okay. If we were looking at nine eleven, did you have the I think you did have that square footage for the ground area coverage?
Yes, that was in the packet, and we did measure the the actual area of the foundation wall and the new footings. And as I said, this the space will be flood compliant crawl space type space and not a not an occupied basement. It totals about sixty-six square feet.
Okay, any other board members have any questions or or thoughts?
Uh, two questions. What is the height of the floor? The covered porch? And what's the height of the cellar of the existing house?
The actual basement ceiling height inside?
Floor height. Floor to ceiling.
Oh, floor height. I believe the site plan has our basement elevation. It's not noted here, but it's approximately seven feet ceiling height. But you're looking for the ground elevation?
Yes.
Right, I believe it's approximately
Seven?
No, it's lower than that. I believe it's approximately elevation five. But we do have an elevation certificate, which I'm going to look into to confirm that. But it's approximately elevation five. Because the first floor elevation is twelve point seven. And the the basement ceiling height is approximately seven feet with a little bit of floor thickness. So that would put the basement floor to about elevation five or so, give and take.
John, I have the certificate of elevation in front of me, if that it would be helpful.
Oh, yeah, sure. I don't know if it's noted on there, Andy.
So I have top of bottom floor, including basement crawl space or enclosure floor in feet. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Top of bottom floor, including basement crawl space. I have it four point nine feet. Top of the top of the next higher floor is twelve point seven feet.
Okay, so four point nine is the elevation.
Yep, that's my question. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
You're welcome.
Hey, does anyone else on the board have any questions or comments? John?
A comment too about the raising of the utilities. I think that's certainly going to be a improvement. There's a a comment too about the uh raising of the utilities. I think that's certainly gonna be a clue, but to the overall site um. And 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 take care of that, where is a kind of abandoned the use of the basement now is usable space by adding the floodbeds, so. Uh, I think that's a certainly a strong effort for the for the project.
Thank you.
Matt, what was the, what was the section that you were referring to aside from nine eleven?
Was nine seven H?
Okay, in the event that um. Nine seven H does apply, I think we need some magic words from John.
As I was gonna say, or if we think that it is maybe as part of a follow-up, you could submit a, you know, brief. Memo. I I I think, you know, the criteria is not that. Overwhelming for this project, but John, I don't know if you have nine seven H at your fingertips or not.
Um, I'm looking at the uh. Nine seven eight section right now um. Propose structure is not subject to damage by flooding or waves. We, I mean, incorporated the flood vents and making the foundation flood compliant. Um, I think that. That address is a flood issue. If if there is a flood, we've addressed it as part of the project. Uh, second says land is subject to tidal action or adjacent tidal waters. I mean, I believe all the. We check all the boxes. I just don't have the engineering documentation to. Prove that and what the board usually requires in situations like this.
This, the flood plain here isn't a tidal flood plain, right? It's from the James Brook tributary.
Um, I I don't, I don't know if it's title or not, um, but we are under the flood elevation, but I I don't know the exact aspect of the. Where the tributary is titled.
I might be wrong, but I think in this area too, we've looked at the James Brook, have we? And Charlie, you might know better. Haven't haven't we taken into effect that it's that it does have that controlled gate to it?
Right.
And.
And as I mentioned earlier, since there is a non-conforming structure on the property, we. We we interpreted that as making the property non-conforming, which is why we went with section nine eleven.
Yeah, and um. I'm not sure if anyone else on the board. I I didn't actually get to reviewing it until last night and and it just came up as a as a question. Um, it would probably. You know, makes sense that. Unless somebody has. Unless somebody knows for sure that um, you know, we would continue this anyways, but maybe. That maybe an action item could be. To um provide some. Bullets in regard to nine seven H, if that is what we. Determine it to be.
What is the easterly bow uh bound in the deed uh of the property? Does it deed on uh? The the. The ocean there or does it deed on uh the James Brook?
Um, I I believe it goes past. The tributary um. The uh, the survey has the breakdown of the upland area versus the the recorded area. I don't know the exact definition of the uh eastern lot line on the deed, but um. The site plan does break down. Those areas. But it does go five hundred and thirty feet, so it it goes quite a bit into the marsh. But we can discuss this further with Kavanaugh or Merrill Consulting. To either. Uh. Explain why nine eleven we think is appropriate or. At least go through the bullet, the bullet points of nine seven, nine seven H. If if the board thinks that's that's the right approach between now and the next.
Why not both?
Or both? That's why not both, is that? I I. Yeah. My thought, and it might not be the right one, was that nine. Nine, if the structure is conforming and they're really only in front of us for floodplain. Nine eleven seemed to be a more applicable to a non-conforming. Structure, but um. I think he's presented to us. What we would need if we did determine it's nine eleven, but they they would probably. Like John said, be best served to provide some bullet points. Regarding the criteria of nine seven H. If that's, that's the direction. We choose to go. Do any other?
A quick question about the non-conformity in situations like this. Is the fact that the basement is in the floodplain with utilities. Could, would that be interpreted as a non-conforming condition when it comes to the floodplain? Or are you looking, is that supposed to be a dimensional non-conformity? Is that, could that be considered a use non-conformity because there are utilities in the floodplain? Just curious.
David, what would you, I mean, I usually see it as a dimensional non-conformity.
Uh, in the language of nine eleven seems to be addressing. Uh, dimension.
And I mean, just at a quick glance of nine seven H, I don't see anything that that. Seems to be a knockout, but um. I just think we would want to see uh. That addressed. I'm not sure if any other um board members have. Any questions or additional thoughts?
I agree. I think we need to. We need to address the criteria in our findings.
Okay. Yeah, so John, why don't, why don't we take that as a follow-up? If you can provide. You know, a brief, a brief memo on. Nine seven H and. Cassandra, do we have any? Attendees um from the public? Who have any questions or comments?
Don't see anybody raising their hand, but it does look like Carolyn has joined us at some point. Want to bring her in, um, but nobody else is raising their hand. In terms of other members of the audience.
Okay. Well, if nobody has any further questions. Then I would make a motion to continue. One twenty-four South Main Street until our. October hearing. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all in favor? Please say ayes.
David, go inside.
Lee Darst.
Michael, Dicky, I.
Okay. It's continued until October. And uh we'll get to bring our chairman back for the next hearing.
Hey. Oops, wait a minute. There we go.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we have one more new hearing. Sorry. One more new hearing tonight at one twenty-five North Main Street. Uh, special permit under eight seven B. And uh who's here to represent uh? The Lemons, who are Lenins, who are the owners of this property.
Uh, yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Jeff Delisi with Armburger, Delisi and Harris. Um. We're gonna need to promote into the conversation Paul Marabito, who is our uh Ross Engineering Engineer Survey. Uh, Julie Johnson, who's with Custom Home Design, who is uh design the addition. Uh, I believe Liam Vickers might be here. Uh, Liam is the builder. And then my clients, uh Lisa and Mike Lennon. I know, I know are on the call as well. Um. Even though we're promoting all of these individuals, I'm gonna try uh my best to summarize uh this situation. It's gonna take a few minutes. Of you just looking at my face and me just discussing this and then I will share my screen and walk the board through uh. The site plan and the floor plans and so forth. Um, so essentially. Uh, we have a lot that's in the Residence B zoning district. It is pre-existing non-conforming. It's the lot area. That being about a little more than twenty-two thousand square feet and thirty-five thousand square foot zone. It's also pre-existing non-conforming. It's a lot with having about a hundred feet and a hundred and twenty-five foot zone. Um, lot frontage, incidentally, uh, is about double uh of what is otherwise required in the zone. So the dwelling was constructed in nineteen forty-five. It pre-exists the adoption of zoning. Uh, it's non-conforming as to both side yards. On the west side, it is about nineteen point two feet. Um, uh, that on the east side, which is the side that will be focusing our discussion this evening. It is about seven point four feet in a twenty-foot zone. There are no issues of coverages. Uh, the height of the existing dwelling is about twenty-six feet. I don't think there'll be much of an issue of height. Um, there was a special permit that was issued in two thousand thirteen uh by this board. Uh, I'm sure uh a few of you at least will have a recollection of that. Um, it was issued to a prior owner to allow the garage on the property. Uh, which was part of the original home, uh ultimately to be expanded about a foot closer to the front yard and also about five feet in height. Uh, so as to allow some storage area. Um. Our clients came along in two thousand seventeen. They're longtime residents of Cohasset, uh fell in love with the property, purchased the property at that time. Few years later, in two thousand nineteen, they hired Julie Johnson, our house designer. Uh, to design an addition that would allow um uh the garage to be expanded. Um, so it's allowed tandem parking. Uh, and then also to create a family room. Uh, and a second floor that provides some bathroom and office space. Uh, Julie, in designing the plan, was very careful to ensure that the non-conforming structure while be expanding, while while being expanded. Uh, front, rear and height um was to be uh moved no closer to the side yard than what is existing. Uh, after she did the plans, COVID hit, plans are put on hold. And uh in two thousand twenty-one, uh, the owners hired Liam Vickers, who's a builder uh to construct the addition. Uh, the building permit was application, uh, the building permit application was filed by Mr. Vickers. And when he filed that um. It was based on the mistaken assumption that zoning relief was not required. Uh, because they were not going any closer to the non-conforming property line than what had at the time existed. And um. I, the board's aware, I do almost exclusively zoning and real estate work. I work in Hingham and Situate. Other towns in the South Shore, uh, in the circumstance that this property is in actually don't require zoning relief. Um, my understanding is Hingham doesn't. I know in in Situate, if if you're under a certain. Percentage increase in gross floor area does not require zoning relief either. So uh that was an honest mistake by Mr. Vickers. Um. After he applied for the building permit application, um, the building permit was actually issued. Um, I know John Allen is here and John. Will speak as to why that occurred. Uh, but my understanding is that he was under also a mistaken belief. Uh, that zoning uh relief had actually been issued and that mistaken belief was not. Was not conveyed by our team uh at all. So after the permit was issued, the garage was demolished and about three months after construction substantially begun. And the addition was almost fully constructed from an exterior zoning perspective. Uh, the the mistake that no zoning relief was actually issued was discovered. Uh, by Mr. Hallen, I believe, um, which uh. Caused everybody to sit down a few times and provoke this application. So um. This obviously is a unique unfortunate situation. Uh, there was no intention to deceive. Uh, there's been cooperative meetings. And I I think you can ask Mr. Allen. He believes uh the same. Um, the reconstructed garage uh or the addition is uh no higher. Uh, when measured to the ridge. Uh, as the ridge of the existing home, uh, so it's right around the same height of twenty-six feet. Um, the neighbors on all sides, um, including the neighbor most likely affected to the east, I believe, the Norton's. Uh, provided letters of support to the ZBA for this application. Um, the height of the peak of uh the addition. Uh, about twenty-six feet. Uh, and the height of the peak of the house is actually about ten feet lower than the height of uh the dwellings uh to the peak. Uh, on either side of the property. Um, and I think the site plan uh indicates the the height to the peak of the three structures. Uh. The house plans filed with uh this uh this application, which were most recently revised to include data involving height. Um, indicate uh increases in all three of the criteria that the board in time looks at on these types of applications. Uh, the square footage of the floor was increased about a hundred and two feet. The volume of the um within the non-conforming setback. Um, the volume of uh the structure within a non-conforming setback was increased about fifteen hundred cubic feet. And the facade within the non-conforming setback was uh increased about a hundred and eight feet. Um, I'm gonna open my uh screen in a second. Uh, we'll we'll take a look at the neighborhood. Uh, I think you're gonna see uh ma- many homes that uh are non-conforming as to side yards and in some cases have actual encroachments over the property lines. Um. Listing them out, one twenty-nine North Main, one thirty-three North Main, twelve Ripley, twenty-nine Sawyer, one thirty North Main, one thirty-four North Main, one fifty-four North Main. Um, so in summary, recognizing that this is kind of an uncomfortable hearing to be in. Um, born out of a series of honest mistakes. Um. I do, however, believe that the owners ought to be able to rely on a building permit, especially after having undergone. Uh, the construction uh for many months. So with that, I'm gonna um. Open my screen, if that's okay, and uh go over. What we have. So the board probably sees uh the plan coming up now, populating in your screens. Uh, you're gonna see uh the property at one twenty-five. Um, the crosshatched area is the dwelling. Uh, as it exists or previously existed uh without the garage that previously existed, which extended at the time all the way to. This, the edge right over here. And um what what you will see is that uh as we look at the non-con, as we look at the. Seven point four feet is the closest point between uh the the uh former and now existing dwelling to the property line. You're gonna see uh that it it at no point goes any closer than seven point four feet to that easterly property line. Um, you're also gonna see the peak elevation here uh above sea level. Uh, as being about ten feet lower than the Henderson Residence. Uh, as being about ten feet lower than the Henderson residence at one twenty-nine. And about ten feet lower also than the uh, Norton residence at one nineteen. Um? Moving along, just to show you the mass GIS that I had uh, discussed, uh, the property is right here. Uh, and I had mentioned other homes that are. Encroaching into the setbacks and sometimes over the property lines, you can see. Um, here. Uh, this is not conforming, this is not conforming. Um, we have non-conforming over here, which is encroaching. This looks to be the same. Uh, uh, situation over here, here. Across the street, we have properties that are going into other properties. So this is a bit of a. It's not uncommon to have properties uh, into the side yard setbacks, and I guess that's. Uh, that's my point, uh, in addition to the relative size and of the mass of this home compared to others. Um, as far as architecture is concerned, we have um? Sheets A one through A four. Um, A one is existing conditions. Or pre-existing conditions. Uh, and then I I'll go through each uh, in a second. A two. Has various elevations and calculations of non-conformity shaded areas of areas within the non-conforming setback that are being added. Sheet three is just uh, is actually if anybody got the paper plans uh, is the same. As far as two different elevations, but just at an increased scale. This is a one-quarter inch scale as opposed to sheets one and two that are one eighth of an inch. And the same with the fourth sheet. So just um? Going back to the existing plan. Uh, you'll see the home here. Uh, front, right, left and rear. Um, you're probably most interested in the front, which focuses in this area, and this is what it looked like. Prior. Uh, as well as uh, the uh, right side. Uh, which is the perspective from the closest butter to the east. This is what uh, is being proposed. Um, in the application and what has been uh, actually constructed. Uh, you're gonna see this area here that's been added in the in the non-conformity. From the perspective of the front yard elevation. And uh, you'll see uh? You'll see it there from the perspective of the rear elevation. And of course, the side elevation. Is uh, is much larger and you see that there. Down here, you're gonna see the floor plan and how the non-conforming line cuts through the building. The pink area, um, what actually occurred here was that? The garage that had uh, previously existed was built on slab, I believe. And it was uh? Uh, even though it's an addition that we count for in pink, it actually was demolished and um? The addition is actually a new structure on a foundation. But the height has an increase, the the uh, height calculation was based upon. The uh, the grade, which is which is flat. Um, and uh, the 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 new. Uh, addition structure was actually built at that same starting point, um? And you'll see the chart that has the uh? The data that I had spoke spoken of in my um, initial discussion. Uh, finally, I have um? Some photos or photo here. Of uh, the addition as it's uh, as it's constructed. Relation uh, to the home over there. You'll see it's about the same height as uh, the peak over here and uh, and it does go back. From there. So um? In summary, that's that's really what my um? My presentation is. Um, and I guess I'll ask the board if the board believes it has all the data it needs and hopefully. Will recognize the oddity of the circumstance and uh? We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'd like to. Chime in, um, you've left out. I think a fair amount of pertinent information, um? Uh, first of which, this uh, property, uh, as you suggested in two thousand twelve was proposed. To have an expansion not very different from what you have now done. Um, and this board and neighbors, but the board in particular expressed great concern. Over the increased massing and as a result. And I would say in a, in a, in a friendly uh, manner, the the then applicant. Um, reduced very considerably. Uh, their proposed two-story structure to a one-story structure. Uh, leaving the roof height at some thirteen or thirteen and a half feet. And uh, so there it was, uh, you know, basically until uh? Twenty nineteen or twenty twenty-one, rather. Um, eight years later, a proposal came in looking quite different. Um, the first point I'd like to make is that I do not believe. That the uh, the building permit was issued, but the way I read the building permit and it was filled out by your. Engineer, um, presumably. The building permit was for a one-story house. A a one-story addition, not a two-story. There's no mention of bedroom. Um, there and I'll I'll read you what the building permit says and and you can. Uh, challenge if you want, but these are your your client's words. Demolition of existing garage and construction of a new garage, living room and kitchen bump out. Utilizing the existing garage foundation. Well? Um, when I hear and see words like living room and kitchen bump out. I, that doesn't suggest a second story to me. Um, secondly, um, using the existing garage foundation. Uh, is the existing garage foundation there still? Or has it been removed?
Um, I believe it's been removed, Woody.
So it wasn't being uh? So you didn't comply with the building permit, which says it, you would be utilizing the existing garage footprint. You weren't utilizing it. You tore it down and more than doubled it. Now, you know this board is concerned about. Not just it, does a neighbor have a have a side yard setback or front yard setback or something? I mean, uh, each, each house, each pro- proposal has to be uh? Considered on its own merits, and so I looked at the building permit and said, wait a minute, this is for a one-story garage. I flipped the page. Two-point, uh, two-point-two where it's stamped, and I don't think you're not gonna be able to see this, and I apologize, but. It's a stamped um, approval reviewed for code compliance. By John Howland on eleven nine twenty-one, and it shows a one-story garage. It shows a one-story garage. It doesn't sh- show a two-story structure. Um? And thirdly, if if the intention had been originally to build a bedroom. Um? My understanding would be that you would need some. Um, relief or or approval from the sewer commissioner. You're you're on the sewer, aren't you? Or your client?
Yeah, the property.
Properties. You would, you would have to go to, have you gone to the sewer commission?
Um, I'm not certain whether it's necessary depending on. Uh, the question of one E D U. Which is what they base their betterment amounts on is uh, four bedrooms. So I don't know if originally years ago.
We can come back to that, cause I'll I'll wanna hear from John, but. But basically, um, I I think uh, there was so- some sort of inadvertent or ed- intentional. Deception here in terms of presenting. Uh, requesting a building permit for a one-story. Um? Uh, structure, tear down and rebuild. As opposed to a much enlarged. Tear down and enlarge both first floor and add a second floor. That bothers me quite a bit. Because this board would not have accepted. Dave McMorris, Charlie Higginson and I sat on this. Hearing in two thousand twelve, and I can tell you, we would not have approved. A second story. We didn't, and the client or the the applicant knew that and modified in a very. You know, cooperative way. Uh, downsized um, their plans. So now we we, now we're in uh, two thousand twenty-one. And um? The building permits issued. And building, you know, uh, construction um, commences a few. Months later, and then it 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 finally, as 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 the foundation, everything was completed. Uh, it became apparent that um, there was, there was a great expansion within the 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 foot, the uh, setback. And you know what a section eight, eight point seven, eight point eight, eight point nine. Uh, talk about. Your engineer did because Ross Engineering did the original engineering plans in two thousand twelve. They, they lived through this. This isn't, uh, they didn't just fall off the turnip truck. They knew exactly what the board. Uh, was willing in two thousand twelve to approve and what it was not. And 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 yet, um, construction commenced. Finally, we arrive in Ja- uh, July fourteenth, when John Howland said, stop. Stop, uh, you're gonna need a zoning relief. Everybody on your team, I'm sure knew this. This is not a surprise to anybody. And um, construction continued. Uh, he wrote a letter a week later. Saying he would allow uh, some sort of a enclosure to protect what had already been done, but the building was less than half constructed at that point. And construction convinced in fits and starts until now you basically have a. Uh, uh, a building that's done in, not only in defiance of the zoning bylaws, but in defiance of. The uh, building inspectors. Um, um, dictum that uh, construction ceases until you get. Approval. What kind of approval is your client expecting out of this board, having finished a uh? Finished the construction. Do they expect us to rubber stamp it?
Is that a rhetorical question or?
Well, uh, it could be rhetorical because I.
Look, I I.
As a party of one, I'm, I'm uh?
That.
I'm totally opposed to this project.
The, I think that uh, I think. I think with the application submitted was a photograph of the home. At the time of the application, which was. Uh, in in the month of July, I believe.
Right.
Um, and and I think that the construction. Uh, continuing was an effort to uh? Basically ensure that the home was protected from elements and weather type.
Which which meant finishing the home off?
The the home. I believe that there was a discussion with with Mr. Howland, uh, and I.
Jeffrey, I'm sorry, or my name is Lisa Lennon. I'm the homeowner. Uh, Mr. Chidik, would you allow me to answer that question since I was the one in the meeting?
Well, which meeting we talking about?
Um, we met with John Howland when um, we've, the first time we heard about that we needed to seize construction.
Well, you know, y- you can, but but regardless of what he said, I'll tell you right up front. I mean, I'm, I'll I'll certainly uh? Uh, invite you and 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 listen with respect, but it really doesn't matter. Uh, first of all, he said, she said. If you have something in writing that you can show, great. If you have a recollection, not so great.
Uh, the letter that he wrote that said we could dry in the building. Which is where we left off. We have at the time a three-year-old son. That had a eight-foot hole in the side of his bedroom, and we had moved out for two weeks to dry it in and make his room safe, since we didn't have any. Place to live or any rental. That was our plan. And our builder was going to attach it almost and fill in the hole and make it safe for our son's bedroom. And that's when I met um, with the planning board and said. It, it was uh, for us, we obviously had no idea. We just bought the home and we applied for the.
Well. Did have an idea because the people you hired, they're they're your responsibility. And if, and if they're not inept, I know that much. So if they misled you. Um, I think you've got a problem with with your uh, team, but. Uh, I'm not very interested in a he said, she said, and I do see here on John Howland's letter of this twenty-second of July. No wiring, plumbing and insulation should be installed. In the zoning area in question. In other words, within the twenty-foot side setback and above fifteen feet in height. Now, is there any? Wiring, plumbing and insulation in that?
No.
It's simply.
There's nothing.
You could walk it, you could walk it tomorrow if you wanted to, and it's, it's.
Okay, so we're, we're talking about the exterior then, but. I mean, th- this was, I mean, the application, I think, was misleading. And uh, because your intention was up was to do a second floor and the application doesn't say it. And um? When you were advised you should stop, you uh, continued on, so. Okay, so you haven't completed the project, so um? Complying with the bylaw shouldn't be uh, as as amended or as approved back in two thousand twelve, shouldn't be much of a burden. And complying means in my estimation, taking it down to uh? The way it looked uh, a year and a half ago. But? That's, that's my point of view, and I'm only one of six people on the board, and the board may not agree with me, but I think this is uh, I. I don't think the word egregious is uh? Uh, an overstatement. I think this was a deliberate flouting of zoning bylaws and uh? I don't know what kind of professional advice you got. I don't care, um, because you're liable.
But. Unfortunately, I I understand how it may appear. This is complete news to us when we were heading away and we got that call. We would not subject ourselves to go through this if we knew that there was a chance that that would happen. We didn't file the building permit. I understand our agents did. We st- we got stopped. It. Took four months to get this approved. I think that's ample time for the town to figure out. If something was wrong. The plans we submitted clearly showed a second floor. I don't know where that went wrong either, or where the review process went wrong. We got the building permit. We weren't stopped until. Almost eight months into it, and so that's, you know, there was no malice, no sneaky part on our part.
Well, they may not have been, but I I I think the project itself was uh? Not well managed and. You understand, I'm sure, that zoning bylaws trump uh? Uh, building uh, inspectors or or building permits. The bylaws.
When we get it issued a permit and build for eight months, that's, that's our point. We wouldn't not have done that if. We thought we were doing something sneaky here.
Well, you may have to go back to your uh, to your colleagues, your team and uh, seek some sort of redress. But you're not, I don't think you're gonna get redressed from the town. But I'll, I'll turn it over. That's just a point of view. Because I I think this uh?
And we know nothing about the previous project either. I didn't personally, so.
Engineer knew it because he he was the engineer in that project.
Okay. I I have. Woody, I don't, I don't think our engineer was involved in the.
It was, I've got a sign, I've been assigned site plan from Paul Maravito in two thousand twelve here. It's October nineteenth, two thousand twelve, signed by Paul Maravito, so if you have a. A registered engineer signing a plan, I I think that's valid. He knew what he was signing.
No, what I, what I, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, Woody, I I recognize that, um? Uh? I I'm not certain that Mr. Maravito was aware that a building permit application in two thousand twenty. One was uh, was being applied for.
Oh, he wasn't. Why? Why wasn't he aware?
Um, I I'm. I don't, I don't know why I wasn't there. I just joined this team a few months ago.
All right, I'll, I'll give you a pass on that one, but Jeff, hear me out. Now I have a site plan for August first, two thousand twenty, signed by Paul Maravito.
Right, which.
Same guy.
I called Paul and asked him to do it. After it came to our attention that this issue had arisen. And I received the call and I was heading on vacation and I wanted to make sure we got the the application in as soon as possible. So uh, I called Paul and asked him to prepare a zoning plan and prepare an application. But what I'm telling you is at the time that the building permit application was filed in two thousand twenty-one. Um, it is, it would be nice to be able to point to Mr. Maravito and say, hey? You must have been aware that you needed zoning relief because you were aware you needed zoning relief in two thousand twelve. I'm saying that. He wasn't involved in the building permit application in two thousand twenty-one. Um, this really. Uh, you might not believe it, um? It really is in an honest mistake. Uh, the Lenins never. Would have invested this money and this effort in filing an application, thinking they were gonna get it. Past the building department. Uh, and 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 commence construction, knowing the risk that they, that they would have to tear this. Structure down, um? We were very careful to 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 speak. Circumstances have changed. They didn't own the property in two thousand twelve. And uh? A- and and at the time, the butter to the east in two thousand twelve is a different, different uh, residence. Um, these abutters in two thousand twenty-two have submitted. A letter of support. They understand the circum- A letter of support. They understand the circumstance we're in. We've shared the plans. We've kept them apprised the whole time. I, thi- this shouldn't be a rubber stamp. But I'm encouraging the board to, to look at it, not in the context in the lens of two thousand and twelve. Which didn't concern our clients at all, but look at the neighborhood as it is now. Um, and, 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 and recognize that it is, it is a neighborhood that does have homes that do violate. The setback uh, considerably in certain circumstances. So it's not.
It's an old neighborhood, it's an old neighborhood. I, I grant you, but an old neighborhood where you have uh, a lot of non-conformities doesn't. Then uh, extend those rights to other homeowners. I have a, a neighbor whose house is taller perhaps. I, I, this is a hyper, this is a. This is a fictional.
I fully agree.
Taller than it should be. Does that give me a right to build a house that's forty or forty-five feet tall because they have it?
Not without zoning approval.
No, not without zoning, prior zoning approval, please. Uh, and so on and so forth. I mean. You know, every old neighborhood had, just about has non-conformities. My neighborhood does, all up and down the street. But we all have to uh, apply for zoning relief when it's called for. We don't go ahead and build and then say, oops, mea culpa. Uh, we've had a few unfortunate situations like that in the past, but um. I'd like to turn it over and at, see if the board has questions and John Howland, I don't know when is appropriate for you to chime in now, or do you wanna hear other? Points of view from the board and then uh, give us your perspective.
Uh, whenever your discretion is, if you need me to uh. Speak now, I will, or I can uh, wait till after the board's finished.
Well, why don't you speak now a bit? And of course, if the board has, has other points of view or other, other uh, issues that they would like to raise, I mean, you can certainly. Uh, you know, you, you have ample opportunity to come back again and again to um, shed light.
And I, of course, would, would like to know from Mr. Howland if building permit plans were part of the building permit application.
I, 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 I guess I'll respond, respond to the chair first, but I just wanna make sure I put the right.
Yeah. So. John, I'd like to hear your, your, your perspective of the, of the chain of events that probably uh, were triggered in October or November of last year and then. Leading up to the present.
Uh, yeah, so what we did have was a um, you know, back in November, we did, I did issue a permit. Was properly, I, I did review it. Uh, at the time, I uh, believe I. Uh, they had gone to conservation for a stormwater permit, received that, um, I. Put a brief request in to, to see if there wa- was a zoning permit. Uh, again, uh, it was at the time when our Jen was in the process of uh. Leaving us, uh, so I.
Jen is Jen Orem, the, the clerk.
Yes, and she indicated there was a permit. I didn't look as close into it as I should have and I missed it. Uh, and then uh, went ahead, reviewed the permit to go to the fire department, other departments. And um, it was issued i- in, you know, in error at the time. Uh, once I noticed. Uh, that it drove, drove by, noticed that it. Didn't quite look right, then looked further into the um, into the permit. And as soon that afternoon when I did notice that, I stopped by the site. At that point, there was no ridge up. And they hadn't reached the area of um. Of uh, construction, so I did ask them to stop at that point. So we get to the bottom of it. I said, I don't have the. Authority to, to grant relief at this point. And once I noticed an error, I have to, you know, make judgment and correct it the best I can. Uh, so I told them to apply uh, for zoning relief. Uh, they uh, they said they would. They did come in uh, with their builder. And you know, I had some questions about that. There was some difference in op- opinion as to the written. Version and the, and the drawings too, uh, a, a little bit different there. Uh, they did add. A fourth bedroom, uh, but uh, in confirming with the um. Sewer department, uh, they do have a full uh, EUD, so they are allowed. Four bedrooms, uh, so that was, that portion was an issue. Um, yeah. So at that point, I, you know, issued the stop order and said they could proceed at their own risk. I did uh, stop by today. And again, there is no insulation, electrical or plumbing um, installed in any of the uh. Areas in question. Uh, so that's kind of where we're at now. Uh, you know, again, uh, again, once, once the. Error was noticed, I, I, I told them what, what they had to do. And, and that's where we're at, so. That's, I, I, again, I can't, I, once I'm aware of it, I can't allow it to continue. That's not my. Responsibility. I have to uh, pass it over to the zoning board to, uh, for the decision.
Let me ask the zoning board if, if it has questions either for uh, Jeff Delisi or, or others in the applicants or, or John. You've all studied this and three of us sat on the original boat to uh, expand. Is it what is? Was. Dave, do you have any comments?
Well, for starters, um. The fact that other towns don't require people to come back if they've already had a special permit. And they're just expanding what they did the last time. I don't. I, I don't think that that's of any help whatsoever in this case because we don't. And the reason that we don't is so that things like this don't occur. So that somebody doesn't get a permit for a small project and then two years later, by right. Expand it and expand it and expand it and build something that we would never, ever have proved in the first place. And I remember this application when it came up the first time. It was a smaller project than what we have here. And they scaled it back because it was too big at that time. So I, I can tell you that if this. If, if there had been no work done so far and this application came up, there's no way we would approve or, actually, there's no way I would support it. No, I can't speak for the other board members. I'm, I'm, you know, it, it troubles me that it's, it was built. Pursuant to a permit. I mean, citizens come in, they apply for a building permit, they get one. You know, it's my feeling that they should be comfortable that they're doing the right thing. But unfortunately, sometimes these situations occur and. Every time there's a, a um. A step in the wrong direction, it's one more step in the wrong direction. So I'm, I'm. I don't know how I feel about this one yet. I do, I do know that there is no way I would have supported a project like this and, you know, from the start.
And Charlie, what about you? Charlie Higginson?
Uh, I remember we were very concerned over the uh. Uh, closeness to the Whipple's at that time, the adjacent neighbor to the east. Uh, and uh, uh. The project was cut back so that it reduces little uh. Uh, presence of the adjacent building. Uh, uh, given the rest of the history, I, I. Uh, uh, I, I'm very worried about the uh. The lack of stopping or, or when uh, they were uh, told to cease and proceed at their own risk. If they decided to proceed at their own risk, that's uh, that's their own risk. Uh, if they'd stopped, they could uh, let appeal their. They could have submitted their new project and we would have discussed it uh, de novo, which is uh, uh, what I uh. Say, but uh, so uh, I would go along with a, a full stoppage uh, of the project and uh. Uh, uh, and a submission of a new uh, uh. Uh, proposal uh, to, to uh, to, to build uh, what they're planning.
Charles, excuse me, pardon me, this is Lisa, the homeowner. Could I answer that question real quick? Um, and Mr. Chidik, I understand what you're saying and I believe we shouldn't get into a he said, she said situation in any of these meetings. Um, but for the people that were in the meeting, John, Liam and myself. I think it speaks a lot to our integrity when the town told us to stop. We did stop and I do think it's really important that when I asked. John for the safety of our son because we had nowhere to live, if we could at least dry it in. And take out the hole in the side of his room to a twenty-foot drop, if that would be okay. And John said. Give me a week or two to work on that. And we did not do one thing to the house for that amount of time until. The builder received a letter from John that allowed us to keep working. Um, so.
Yeah, we've done nothing beyond what.
Everything that we've been told to do, we have abided by. I've been, I'm very concerned that anybody feels that there was anything sneaky on our behalf. On this because there was not. And we did not even pick up a hammer until, even though John told us we were allowed to dry it in. Liam and I talked, our builder and myself talked since we were in the meeting and I said. Liam and I agreed, we are not even grabbing a hammer for this project until we have a letter from John. That states exactly what he said in the meeting, that we are allowed to make it safe for our son and dry it in. And to other people's points, we have not, we've, to the letter of the law, have not touched insulation. Anything that the board has asked us to do. And I think that speaks to that we're, we're trying to do what's right. And it's been a series of mistakes and, but it's nobody's, I don't know whose fault it is, but we're trying our best to remedy. Any and all mistakes that have happened thus far. And I.
Last week, last week you had workmen working outside on it. What were they doing?
Continuing the shingles, which was part of the drive-in.
Shingles.
Um, so the shingles on the back are all in, the roof's all in. And also in John and I's meeting, and John interrupt me if I, if this is not accurate. Um, the, the main parts of the house that we weren't allowed to work on were the non-conforming parts, but like the kitchen bump out and things of that nature. We could continue working on that. We could sheet rocket, we could power, we could do all that, but we didn't even do that. We have done exactly as the board has asked us and we have the utmost respect for the law, for the board. We're not trying to get any rubber stamps. We're trying. The second we heard that something was wrong, we did exactly as you guys have asked us to do and. We have respect for everything you guys are doing. We're trying to do it right. But we never would have tore down a beautiful bathroom and a beautiful house that was just redone three years ago. If we thought for one instance that this would come up. We live on Main Street. Everybody's gonna see it. It's not like we're on some back road that nobody drives by. We're on Main in Jerusalem. So if we for a second thought one centimeter of this project was out of line or out of law, we would not have tore down a. Beautiful house. It was, it was really perfect. We, and I hope you can trust us and if our record of. Abiding by everything you guys have asked us to do, if that can speak to our honesty and that, or our integrity in that sense.
A small point, then I want Matt Watkins to opine. Um, we haven't asked you to do anything yet. Not a thing. The zoning board is separate. We're, we're a separate entity. And so we haven't asked you to do anything. We didn't ask you to stop and we didn't ask you to start, just to be clear. But um. And anyway, that was uh, not our point. Matt, what do you?
Guys, we're just in the town. No, I do think her point though, Woody, I, I do think that her point though, uh, you know, she's trying to demonstrate that they were trying to work cooperatively with John and. Um, you know, I think that's worth listening to because that's part of the story here for the board. I think. They are telling us, you know, their side of the story. We should, we should listen to that, but. At, at the same point, I do agree that I think with Attorney Delisi that. It's a, it's an awkward hearing because um, you know, we're being asked to review something that we're pretty clear. That we're not in favor of. And then we kind of watched it appear be uh, in front of us, you know, like, like was noted. Most of us probably drive by there all the time and kind of saw this, saw this thing coming and. You know. Now it's there and we're in a spot where we're being asked to review it. Um, it's certainly awkward. I, I did take a look at the building permit as well and. You know, it's, things don't match up. The language doesn't match up with the. With the diagrams, um. The other, uh, my only other point, I guess, is, you know, I. I know Jeff did try to review the neighborhood in quite detail. I mean. The unfortunate thing too with this property is, you know, it's already transformed over the years, so. When you take a look at the historical photos, you look at two thousand and nine and it's a smaller. Area above it, the garage is smaller, the area is smaller. Then you look at the two thousand and nineteen photos, it's, it's become. You know, significantly bigger. Then you look at it, what, what, what it looks like today, you know, and it's. To a size that, that nobody would approve, um. So I think the board needs to consider that too, is it's not just, you know, that. You know, we're, that you're, you're asking to do what others in the neighborhood have, have done because that's already happened. We're now kind of asking us to do more than I think has been done in the neighborhood period, so. It's a tough spot for, for the board to be in. But as I started out, I mean, I do think, you know, we should listen, you know, like. Lisa says, you know, our, our, our intent is to try to. Work cooperatively with John or they ha- you know, they haven't insulated it, they haven't uh, electrical that, but. You know, the board is in a really tough spot to look at this and say. Essentially, we normally look at things and say, what can we approve? We're always being asked to say. How much has to be taken down, which is a. Which is an odd situation to be answered. That's, that's really all I have to say on it.
Okay, Lee, Darst. You're muted.
I'm unmuting. I was very confused about um, the progress of this until I ran into John Howland today and he explained to me what happened because I. Seen the emails and I had, obviously in preparation, the meeting, I, this site and I was confused because I said. This is all built. I don't understand what's before us. Um, and then I, when I stopped at the town hall today. I ran into John Howland and he explained this to me. Um, so I um, am just listening to all this new. And I um, uh, it is definitely an unfortunate situation.
Mike, Dickie?
Yeah, um. You know, I uh. I, I, I just gonna repeat what a lot of other folks have said in that I, I think the board i- is faced with a. Hopefully uh, low probability event, but here we are, but I, I hope it doesn't come up too frequently. But um. I, 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 I think I'm new to the board. I don't have the past history here. I'm, I'm willing to look at the application. Um, uh, you know, uh, with uh, open eyes and, and uh, treated as best we can as de novo. Um, I, I, I think the risk for the, 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 the owners is if, you know, even if, if the board looks at it. Um, uh, uh, as, uh, as fairly as we can and, and, and tries to, you know, uh, put aside the, the past history, which. Certainly uh, uh, sounds as if, uh, um, you know, the, it, it. Certainly sounds as if there is some history here, but you know, kind of starting anew and looking at it fresh. Um, if the board decides that, you know, if someone had come up without having the, the um. The, the, the uh, construction already done, it wouldn't have granted the relief sought. I, I, I don't know what the board can do more than that. You know, kind of treat it as fairly as we can, but recognize if the board wouldn't have granted the relief sought um. For someone who hadn't already created the construction, um, then it, that, that has to be the way because I, I don't think. The board can take a position that, you know, uh, uh, to incentivize people to kind of, you know. Ask for forgiveness rather than permission. I, I, I don't think that's the way the board's supposed to work and I, I, I. I, I would assume that most people would agree that, that, um, you know, just because. Again, granting the applicant's position that it was all a misunderstanding and they meant no. Uh, ill will and, and, and they didn't, wouldn't have done it if they had known what they know now. I, I, I don't know if that's. That's sufficient to say, well, uh, you get a free pass. I, 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 I certainly don't think that's gonna send the right message.
I think it was the building permit that, you know, was the, the building port, permit being issued, I think was the. Driver for us to move forward. It wasn't to be sneaky.
Right, but, but go back to what I said.
And, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm willing to concede that point. Uh, uh, no question.
Never want to be in this situation.
Yeah, no, I, I, uh, uh, yeah. I, I can't speak for the rest of board members, but, but I, I, I certainly, uh, think this is a, a, a situation that as a board member. I'd, I'd, I hope is never repeated frankly, so.
I'm, I'm certainly with you there, but you know, um, I go back to the building permit. Uh, Mike and it, and it, it speaks to a one story, uh, tear down and rebuild. It doesn't speak to an addition or an expansion. And in fact, what's resulted, if we go dial back to twenty twelve. When this property was first proposed to expand to today, I mean, I don't start, if you will, as a baseline. With the approved special permit of twenty thirteen, start with what we as a board looked at before. We approved anything. I mean, in. Versus every case, in every case, anything that was nonconforming facade, volume, footprint has more than doubled in a couple of cases tripled. Now you start tripling a nonconformity. I can't, I am hard pressed to think of examples in this town, right, left or center. Uh, that, uh, would ever have allowed a tripling. If this had been a modest increase, you might have. Be able to tug at my heartstrings a little, but this is, this is much too much. I don't care about the rest of the house that's not, you know, within the setback. That's not within our jurisdiction. I'm just looking at this. Piece of, not this nonconforming piece that's tripling or two and a half times minimally. I mean, that's huge. We, we, uh, draw the line at a fifty percent increase, not a two hundred and fifty percent increase. And so I think is, this is not just a, gee, uh, you know, maybe my, uh, the bill contractor. Uh, didn't understand about filing for a building permit and he did it in error. I mean, the whole project is, um, way out of scope, way out of scale, I think, but. I don't know, um.
Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't see the permit when it was filed, but I can also, you know, use the old saying that a, a picture is worth a thousand words. And I know that the drawings were there too, so it wasn't some, you know, sneaky wording that we used to try and sneak something by with a picture of the new garage on. And it was, it was designed that way and nothing we have done is any different than the drawings we submitted as well. And, and again, I asked that you look at it with fresh eyes and I keep hearing you say Mr. Chittick, two thousand twelve, two thousand twelve. That wasn't us. I know nothing about that history.
Right, but we're not in a habit, as Dave McMorris said, a, a, a number of minutes ago, of approving something. Let's say in this case, a special permit and having somebody come back in a few years later and somebody come back few, a few years later, that's just sort of. Um, kind of scope and scale creep. Oh, they got a, your, your predecessors got a, a special permit for something that concerned the board even when we granted it. Not, not concerned so that I stayed up all night long worrying about it, but it did not necessarily, um, satisfy us. But, but we went along with it, but that was a fifty percent increase and that was a, or a little less than fifty percent. That's as much as we typically went in terms of in, increasing in the nonconformity. I, I just think, well, you, you know where I'm, where I'm at so far, but. I don't know if, uh, other members of the board would like to. Add on, um, it's nice, by the way, I will say, I'm glad your neighbors are satisfied, but we don't run, you know, and I'm not trying to be. Trite here, but we don't run popularity contests. If neighbors don't like something, we take it under advisement, but they don't get to vote. And if neighbors do like something, again, we take their points of view under advisement, but they don't get a vote. I mean, we have to think of the town as a whole. These examples, will there be others? So on and so forth and, um, people try. Anyway, that's. Board members, do you have more that you would like to? Uh, ask, we can certainly open it up to the public, but I don't know if other members of your team, Jeff Delisi, have. Anything to add? They, they certainly are, public hearing, you know, certainly welcome to speak and not trying to cut them off.
Um, well, I'll defer to any members of my team that are here, uh, and if you want to speak, now's the time. I, I, again, I don't, I don't have personally much more to add. Uh, other, other than, uh, you know, plans were filed with, uh, the building permit application. And, you know, again, I, I understand the mission creep, so to speak, issue that you're talking about. But, you know, we're, we're viewing this based upon, uh, an application filing. That, um, compares the building prior to the issuance of the building permit. To, uh, what we are proposing to do, uh. And, and again, I think that there are multiple factors that go into the board's determination of, uh. Is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? Um, I do recognize that you don't want to encourage, um, any, any persons who may, unlike these clients. Have, um. On, you know, uh, unclean hands or, or who may wish to misrepresent and then claim ignorance later. Um, but, uh, as, as the board has reminded me on multiple occasions, every matter is to be taken on its own merits. I don't think that the board is establishing a precedent in, uh, on any other application. If it were to approve this application. Um, and, and, you know, while the history is interesting insofar as two thousand twelve, what the board. Would have done, I mean, I don't know, the board didn't, never voted on the initial application. Um, I know what you're telling me, but, um, I think that what matters is, is a look at the existing application. And I do think that the, um, circumstance that we're in. Is something that makes it unique, separates it out from others. And I think that it is something that the board should take into consideration. Because we do have the fact that a building permit, uh, was issued. Uh, with the language it was, but based on plans that, that show what was constructed and so. It's, it's an odd situation, um, and I, I think that, um. You know, the Lenins are, they're, they are, uh, speaking the truth to you and. It would really, it'd really be a terrible, um, situation for them should they have to. Uh, tear, tear this building down, uh, and, um. So I'm asking the board to look at it, uh, under the standard that it's required to look at it. Which is, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And also kind of give us, uh, some credit that, uh, we, we have a building permit application. In hand, um, was issued wrongly and we all know that. Um, but when it was issued and my clients were completely unaware that it was defective. And so they began the construction and I just, again, um. That's pretty much all I have to say about that. I'll defer to the rest of my team, if anybody has anything that they want to add.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Lane Victor's Ronan Residential.
Okay.
So I'm the one that submitted for the, the builder submits for the, um, for the building permit. Um, I mean, back in the day, it was going around each department. In the town, submit the plans and having the department head sign off on it. Today, it's, you know, we're utilizing permannize, which is, uh, you know, everything's uploaded on the computer. Sent to the town for review, um, and in the application, you're right, you know, but it does say a brief description of the project. This is a brief description, which it was the most important part of the, that job. After it's submitted. At that point, we're relying on. Members of the different departments to come back to us with questions, which they do, they come back. Via permannize and we respond to those, uh, questions or queries. Um, there were no questions, there were no queries, there were no red flags. Um, the permit was issued at that point. You know, for us, that's the green light to go ahead and start. Project started. Um, you know, by the time we got to shut down, um, we had the ridge up. You know, with rafters. Um, so it wasn't just at the second floor level, it was the ridge, the rafters. Um, at that point, then job shut down, you sit down with John. Um, he tells us to proceed at our own peril, um, you know, which was to get the project weather tight. Safe and secure for the workers, for the residents, um. Nothing else, no plumbing, no electrical, no insulated, just as John had said. Weather tight and that's where we're at right now. We're at weather tight and the project has again come to a standstill, so it is. Because we cannot proceed any further.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
What do you just want, one other comment, if that's okay? Yeah, and I, and I, uh, 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 Mike and Lisa, I, you know, I, I don't think through any fault of their own. Uh, you know, I think they, uh, there were several errors that took place here, you know, starting. Whether the, the engineering, the, the, that took place that professionals shouldn't know about. Uh, the architect on board that should have looked at it too. I should have looked at it more clearly. The builder is responsible too. Um, uh, as well, um, you know, to there, again, we're left in a situation where. Um, you know, unfortunately, I know all the board members are uncomfortable and rightfully so. Um, there, but, uh, it, it might be an opportunity. For the applicants to, i- if, uh, if, if they could look at. Uh, you know. Any possible reduction, uh, you know, of some sort, uh, there, uh, because that, uh, just. You know, as a suggestion, um, because again, they did. Proceed that, uh, you know, continuing to, uh, choose to build it. Uh, as a option to make it weather tight as opposed to, you know, other methods, but, uh, there, it might be. You know, a time for, for. For that to be considered to at least lessen the, uh, the, the nonconformity in a manner. I don't, I'm not. Part of the design team, but, uh, you know, that's just a, a, a thought we, uh, would like to put out there.
Got it, all right. Has there anybody, Cassandra, in the queue? Well, we haven't heard.
Actually, John's point too kind of led me to, I was gonna make two comments. One was.
Please, go ahead.
I don't think I did see the, you know, the letters of support, um, if. If I missed them in the packet, uh, you know, but if others have seen them, I could get them from.
I haven't seen them. I don't think they were submitted to us.
But yeah, if we, it probably would make sense to see those, um.
I have them all right in front of me. They were submitted by Jeff's team. I can read them all to you right now and I could share a screen and show them all to you. Because I think they're very powerful and they speak to our neighbors actually wanting us to go through with this. Um, because it helps their property values as well. And so I think the letters from our neighbors are incredibly powerful. And I think.
Well, typically we get them in hard copy form, you know, electronic and then hard copies.
Yeah, and.
Normally I do submit those. I, I'm sorry if they weren't included, but I would agree that there were many letters of support, um, that were submitted. I thought I sent them along.
No, in the interest of time, I don't want to, I mean, you know, I can read pretty quickly, uh.
You want to, if you want to send them to us, I think.
Thorough read more than once, so. We won't ignore them.
And then kind of on my list was, and it kind of piggybacks on John's point is kind of as, as we look at how do we move forward, I guess. Is the board? I guess we need to come to a decision here, like is a board being asked to review the plan? As it is today, as it was presented in our packets? Or is there gonna be a modified version of that plan submitted by the applicant for us to review? And I guess a couple of things to consider is, you know, like. The. I think the board's kind of. Express some concerns with the existing plan, number one, but also do, you know. We're not typically the ones that, you know, kind of. Go in and make chops to plans to kind of make them more modest, um, and so I, I think. It's worth putting out there, like, is the next step for, for us to be presented a modified plan that's, uh.
Well.
Or do we review this plan and? You know, I guess that's what we need to figure out.
Matt, I think, I, I feel uncomfortable kind of dictating or demanding. But, uh, that, but I would feel very comfortable continuing this for another month in the event. That Jeff and his team or, or the Lenins in their team, if you will. Um, were to consider some modifications. Um, alluded to by John, but, um, they don't have to. Um, change a thing, I mean, it's their application, so they can. That can rise and fall on its own merits or it can be altered and, um, but. You know, I can't say, I don't know how this board, you know, it's all a question of degree and impact and, you know. At the least, because this has come up, I would at least feel very comfortable continuing this for another month in the event. In the event, not required, you don't get your wrist slapped if, if you don't change anything, I mean. You know, but. But I don't know.
No, I, I, I was gonna chime in, uh, Matt and, and Woody, since you just spoke about that particular issue. Thank you for, uh. Indicating what you did. I, I'm in full agreement with what you just said, Woody, and I think that there would be, um, a continuance no matter what. Which is the normal course of the board in any event. And, um, that'll give us an opportunity as a team to regroup after having heard your comments this evening.
Okay, and after you. You know, throw a glass through the window and yell and scream, then you can see if anything, any changes make sense. And if they don't, they don't. I mean, I, I. Because, you know, Jeff and, and the, and, and the Lenins, everybody else, um, we can only deal with what we're, we're given. We are not a design review board or anything of the like. So, um, you know, we can react, but we can't. Um, dictate or, or anything else, so.
I'm fully, fully understand, um, and, and, and you're, the, the collective anger of the board, I think, is clear to us. And I just wanted to convey is, we're just as angry on our side, um. So we appreciate an opportunity for continuance. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, can I just chime in? Did you say that the letters didn't? I know two neighbors in particular walked a handwritten. Or a printed letter into your office, two people in particular, so I know there were some hard copies delivered. In total, we should have four to every single buddy neighbor.
Okay.
I, I, I completely understand, Mr. Chittick, what you're saying of the neighbors don't vote, they don't get.
No, no, but it's, 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 it's useful. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not dismissing.
Feel bad for our neighbors that they're having to put up with this remodel and they're inconvenienced. And so they're trying to split it along and they were like, please, if you guys could finish, that would be great. And we don't have a place to live, so we're trying to finish because our house is completely demolished. It's not livable right now. So we're in like this weird spot where. We're trying to do what's best, but we're also trying to, and I feel like my neighbors all worked really hard and wrote. Very, very strong letters of support and I think that would, I would, it would behoove the board to read them.
Oh, we would like to.
Lisa, the, the letters were, the letters were, the letters were filed with the board. Cassandra has them. Cassandra will push them out to the board and every member of the board will read them, I'm sure.
Yes, I actually just emailed them all out right now, just in case they weren't sent for some reason before.
Okay.
Um, and I have five letters.
On that correspondence because I only have four.
Okay, why don't you guys, uh, connect in with Cassandra? There may be six letters out there. I don't know, but let's be sure that we have a full.
Yep.
A full set. I mean, you know, there's.
Of course.
And that everybody has a full set, so. No, that's good. Well, uh, i- is there anybody in the queue, Cassandra?
It doesn't look like it. Nobody is raising their hands.
Okay, I'd, I'd make a motion to continue the hearing until next month. Uh, it's October fourth. And, um, there may be, uh, but it's open so that there can be other submissions. Um, uh, don't have to be, um, but there can be and I will leave that up to. The applicants, um, you kind of know that we're, uh, betwixt and between here. I think that's a. Nice way of putting it and, and I don't attribute, uh, uh, you know, kind of malevolent, uh. Uh, intentions on your part. I mean, I, I, I think this was a mix up, but. We have to look at the town as a whole. We have to look at the town as a whole and, and, and situations, so. Um, I have to leave it at that, and I mean, uh. Any, any other final comments before we, uh, my motion is seconded, hopefully, and, uh. Carolyn, do you have anything that you want, feel comfortable saying at this point? Given your. Status. You're, you're muted. And you're smiling. Okay, go ahead.
The button just doesn't want to respond to me. No, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have anything to add at this time. Thank you, though.
Okay, Carolyn's our town council, and, and a valuable person, to be sure. So, um, I have made a motion to continue this until October fourth.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded by Matt. All in favor, Woody, Chitik, I?
Woody, 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 did you say October, did you say October fourth? I thought you had indicated that that's not gonna be the date.
Oh, I think the fourth is November eighth.
Oh, November, I'm sorry. Sorry.
No, 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 I mean, I'm, no, I'm glad you, just in case I, I screwed up. Okay, so it's, uh, October fourth, moved and seconded, we each. Okay.
Carol Higgins and I.
Alright.
Lee Darst.
Uh, Michael Dickey, I.
Okay.
Got one, can I?
Okay, so it's, uh, continued for a month, and, um, we will get the, uh, letters of support. Uh, this week, uh, tomorrow, the next day, without fail, I'm sure. And, um, anything else that comes in will find its way onto our desks. Okay, I thank you. And.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And, uh, I might have sounded like I'm trying to personalize this. I, I don't, it's just. I'm, I'm sure your, your intentions were. Um, quite positive, but. Let's see where we end up. Okay, so it's, it's continued until October. And we have one deliberation tonight. Uh, we have a deliberation on forty-six Border Street. Um, Co Lobster LLC, I think the board has. Seen a draft. Charlie has made some. Clarifying or grammatical, and less grammatical, but clarifying, um. Uh, you know, edits that I didn't bother to, I, I've got them, Charlie, but I didn't bother to send them out because there may be other. Other, uh, such, uh, conditions too that we'll want to incorporate, but, um, doesn't really change the gist of my. Of my decision, decision draft. Does somebody want to, um? Do you want me to, I can, I can explain if you'd like. This, this, this has been a moving target. Um, ever since April, well, March, when we, when we got our, our, our first. Materials, but April, uh, at our first hearing, and it's, um, shifted back and forth in terms of size and, uh. Occupant use, uh, for sure. Um, occupancy load, parking, so on and so forth, all of which are related. And, um, we did close the hearing at our, um. At our last, at our August hearing, and with, with a, a series of, I think, understandings, um. With the applicant, um, and I've put those really on pages, uh. Eight and nine, by and large, supplemental parking parameters. Um, and operating hours and capacity, basically saying what you've submitted. Is what we have to go with. If, if there are, uh, material changes. In, in scope, use, operating hours, da-da-da-da, uh, they've got to come back, but we can't keep. Rolling over hearings all the time, and I know that they wanted to close, at their request, they wanted to close the hearing so they could get other, other boards, um. Uh, to, to, uh, review their, their particular areas, so. Um, I won't spend any time on, unless I made some sort of egregious mistake in terms of submissions, but we got a lot of submissions, a lot of, uh. Um, very, uh, varying seven different site plans, I believe, uh, uh, modifications. I mean, they weren't, they were. Changes, slight changes, and they have worked, in my estimation. Um, quite hard at, at satisfying, uh, parking requirements as they exist in the bylaws. I may not. Uh, as an individual or as only board member, think that our parking bylaws are, are any paragon of, uh. Clarity or completeness, but they are what they are what they are. And they have, uh, attempted to comply in them some, which I, I credit them for that. But if you guys want to have, have add any of my conditions. Um. I think now's the time, um. But the basic. You've all had a chance to look at this for a couple of days, I'm sure.
Yeah, Woody, I think the only, I'm just pulling up my, um. I have this highlighted here, um. Sorry, too many screens open here. The, um. Condition, condition twenty-four, um. I know the intent there, which is, you know, no loading, unloading activity.
I, yeah.
Conducted on site after twelve noon, except for those associated with the lobster pond. I know the intent there is to, um. You know, make sure the delivery trucks are not taking up needed parking spaces, but. I don't know that we need that one. I think that, that kind of self policing. Their deliveries, I mean, they don't benefit from blocking their parking spaces, and I, I would hate to see, like. Deliveries creep up on the early side and have, you know, early morning deliveries because they have to be completed by noon time type of deal, so. That, that was one that might be worth discussing, if it.
Does more harm. Other board feels, but I mean, I'm fairly flexible one way or another. Do you think board members, you think I should, uh, take that one out? And let this be some policing?
Uh, you could take it out because it's also covered, it would affect the parking, and if. Your parking would be negatively affected, then we can review the case in any case.
Okay. Uh, anybody disagree with those? Concurring points of view?
No.
Okay.
I just.
How it goes.
One comment about eighteen. I mean, it says during peak business hours, um. That, so your loading dock was very specific, and then the peak business hours, I think, is, is, um. Is too open because is it weekends, is it weekdays, is it when the fine dining restaurants open? I wouldn't, they personally, I don't, I don't think they're gonna need them when the coffee shops open, so I think that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, Lee, you're, you're right. We had something similar. Um, when we dealt with the, um, Salt House and earlier in the nineties with, uh. Atlantica, or whatever it was called then, Chart House or something, and. I don't know if I like the wording, but we said, did something, said something about. Uh, this will become evident when, uh, there's an, an excess of parking on the street. But I don't know if that helps clarify. It either, and it may be totally under the parking in the street, maybe totally unrelated to the, uh. To the restaurant, or, or, or the, the complex, but you're right, um. Uh, it. You know, how do we define peak operating hours? I, 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 I think when we have congestion and we, we do have that fail-safe. Mechanism, it's, it's not going to be, uh, used lightly, but when the police or. Public safety people start getting complaints. That everybody's walking in the street because there, there is no. You know, sidewalk or whatever, um, or there's congestion, constriction. I don't know, how's the board feel? I mean, we could. I. They are gonna want to have a parking attendant, uh, to, to make sure that in fact, the spaces are being used by patrons. And not by. Passersby, I think, I would.
But their, their parking is open to the public because they have the public bathrooms and the public walkways, so I think that that's a hard. Distinction for them. I mean, I guess they can put up little signs that say to be used for. People using the businesses only, but that's been their big thing is that it's open to the public.
Yeah, that'd be a major change.
So.
Well, where, where's the board coming out on this one? She's raising a good point, but.
Yeah, I did, I, I agree. I mean, I, I, I had that same pause, kind of, what is peak business hours, and then I, I think my first train of thought was that you better up. With. With signage, and then somebody comes out as a, um. You know, I kind of started thinking, does somebody come out as a. As a reinforcement, but that person is not necessarily sitting at the ready, right there in the daytime hours of a Thursday, if it spikes to us, you know?
Right, well, and, and it was never intended to be a Thursday afternoon, uh. Uh, kind of thing. It was really at the discretion of the, um, management. And they would know. They, they may not know when, but they would probably be able to identify what, what is, you know, what is, what is a, a peak. Operating hour, and it could be different. I mean, not that we want to see functions there, but. You know, it, it, a, a Sunday brunch could be very busy, um. You know, a Wednesday night could be busy, maybe a Tuesday night not so.
So that's my whole thing is, I don't know, this gives them the ability to say. What they think is peak hours and what they don't think is peak hours, and so I think that, I think it would be really hard to enforce eighteen the way it is written. Not that I want to overcomplicate it, and I don't, I would, you know, Carolyn could probably add some.
Carolyn, she's throwing.
Well. I. Think that it has to be specific. I think you have to say during, you know, it weekend.
Maybe you'd say like, the, the applicant shall be prepared to utilize. Parking attendants, you know. Uh.
Shall be.
Shall be prepared to utilize parking attendants, um. During anticipated. Um.
Yeah, I mean.
There's something like that.
Times, yeah, during anticipated times where parking. Uh. Is expected to be at capacity, you know?
Yeah, okay.
But see, okay, this is. The devil's advocate part that you, that you, they can say, we didn't know it was gonna be busy that weekend, or we didn't know, or in past weekends, um, it's just. Enforcing words, um, it, that's, um.
Yeah, I guess I kind of envisioned, uh, uh, somewhat iterative process that, uh, with more experience, they would get. Uh, have a much better sense of, uh, peaks and valleys in terms of patronage and, and, you know what I mean? If you knew that Saturday night was, and it would be, will be. Uh, but, you know, full house. Um, you, you know, you don't, uh, you know, after, after, after a few, uh, empirical. Experiences, you know that you really want a parking attendant there. I don't know, I mean. Maybe it solves. Nothing, I'm not trying, I wasn't trying to gotcha.
Would, would the board prefer to say something like? Thursday evenings through Saturday evenings, and at other times. That. Parking may. Reach capacity, the applicant shall employ a parking attendant? Uh, you know, are we, I mean, that would be us anticipating that. Thursday, Friday, Saturday are likely to be their busiest times and in the evening hours. But we could all find out that, heck, the lobster pond and the, the coffee shop. Are busier than the restaurant, who knows?
You, you know, I'm wondering if we could handle this by, uh, through that, that traffic study and maybe ma- modify it a little bit, that we set after the first full year of operations and any time thereafter. Um, we would take a look at it, and maybe we could, uh, incorporate, um. Uh, peaks and valleys in terms of, uh, patronage. I mean, I, I, I think you, you kind of got to live with. With this for a while, and, and to somebody's point, Lisa, somebody's, you don't know, it could be, uh. Wednesday, I don't know, noon or Wednesday morning.
I, 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 Woody, I think, I mean, I, I like it in there because I do think, I think a parking attendant solves everything. I mean, I think that, that. Adds something because I think that we all know. Even now, parking for Old Salt and, you know, the traffic down there on weekends is.
It's already, it's already full up.
And, and, um, and will be full up, and so I, I do, I do, I, uh. I mean, I think we should put something in there. Remember, this whole thing is fluid and subject to change once they do a traffic study, but that traffic study may not be done for two and a half years. Or three years. So I think that we need to have something in place. Especially where there was all the neighborhood concerns of traffic and circling and people trying.
I've got a possible solution, and that is that, um. And I don't know if we could, uh. If I could be open, or the doors could be open for some suggested phrases or wording from each of you. If we weren't Smith it. Here tonight, it, it may take, uh, an inordinate amount of time, but if somebody would say, try this wording, or do you like it or something? I don't know. Carolyn, could we do that, or is that? Sort of one-on-one deliberation?
No, I mean, you've got to do it in the context of, of a public meeting, so if you were going to bring this back up at your October meeting. Uh, you, you'd give everyone a little bit of time to.
Can we, do we have the luxury of time and be able to come back? I don't want to, I don't want to mess these people over either.
Um.
Well, it's, it's a special. Sorry.
No, I just, I think that, I mean. I think we can put language in there now, and that they, because they can all, this is fluid. They can always come back to us and say, it's not practical for us to hire someone three nights a week, or. Um. That's not gonna work, because I think if we don't put anything now, I, I think it, it's a long time before we're gonna be able to make a change to this.
Okay, well, we have one suggestion in front of us, which is, uh, essentially, I'll paraphrase. Uh, during anticipated, uh, times and parking is expected to be at capacity, and then the other suggestion has been. Um, we, we do the anticipation, and we say like, uh. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday evenings. Um, although. And other times when, I don't know, and there's probably some. Some out language or equivocation, but.
Yeah, I, I like that phraseology, but I, but I also think, I, and I think, Woody, you had mentioned it early on. I think to some degree it's self-regulating. I mean, they're going, they're going to want to guard their spots jealously. And the best way to ensure that their patrons and only their patrons get those spots is to have someone on. You know, some on, on, on station there, so, yeah, I, I, I. I think, I think, uh, we, we, we do what, I think something along the lines of what Carolyn suggested, you know, Thursday through Sunday. Uh, and such other times as, you know, the, the proprietors deem to be high traffic, uh, high traffic, uh, times. Um, and, uh, uh, assume that they're gonna want to do that anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be astounding to me if they, if they, if they, I mean, they, they just wouldn't.
Well, cer- certainly, Atlantica, Atlantica always had valet parking there.
Sure, and they know, they had been operating long enough to know when they, the valets weren't there every. You know, every day of the year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They really could tell. Some of it was weather, some of it was, you know, Saturdays are busy, you know, and on you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly subscribe to that, that they're, they are probably better equipped than we are. I don't mind putting in as a straw man or as a. As a stalking horse, something, uh, Thursday through or Wednesday through Sunday, or Saturday night or something, and then. They may say, geez, Wednesday's a dead, dead day for us. Okay.
I know, I know Atlantica did a big brunch, did a big brunch, so.
Sundays, right?
Yeah, Sundays, on Sundays, um, I, I don't know what, I don't recall what they did, if anything, on Sunday evening, but I, I would think. You know, Thursday through Sunday or Friday, you know, Friday evening through Sunday.
Well, Thursday's a big night out for, for, for some.
Then, then third, then why don't we just go with Thursday evening through Sunday? Uh, uh, and, and such other times as, 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 you know, as.
Yeah, because there may be some event that, that is happening on the waterfront, and they know that's going to be an, an unusual. An unusually large crowd on a Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah.
All I know.
Yeah, but, uh, I, 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 I still think that, uh, that they're going to want to have a, a valet there. Uh, when it's crowded, because it's in their own interest to have a valet there when it's crowded, so.
Okay.
To some degree, I think it's self, you know, so.
Are we okay with the? Why don't we start off at least saying Thursday through Sunday, or Sunday noon, or afternoon, or something, and then see where that goes? Why don't we start off at least saying Thursday through Sunday or Sunday noon or or afternoon or something and then see where that goes?
Yes, I I agree.
We're not trying to limit their operation. What we're trying to do is just make it more compatible with the. Public safety issues.
Um, yeah, that I think that sounds great and that was the my only comment when I read it. I thought it was very well written, very laid out and very clear. And um I think it was quite a bit of work and I think you did a great job.
Autopilot, is there any more uh suggestions?
I mean, Thursday through Sunday, how about so in January, they have to have somebody there?
Well, see, I don't think we'd go and ding them because there is nobody in the parking lot and they don't have an attendant, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I I just think we're trying to overregulate.
Yeah. Carolyn, do you think we're we're okay taking a pa- a pass at this and um? If they didn't want to have a uh a parking attendant in January and February because of the weather uh. Yeah, it would come down to an administrative fix, wouldn't it? I don't think we have to open a new.
Well, I I guess the. The question becomes, you know, really one of two things. Number one, if we put in a condition that says Thursday through Sunday, the applicant shall employ a parking attendant. Then theoretically. If John Hallen. Is driving around on a Sunday afternoon, you know, in January when there's a nor'easter going and he wants to go down to see what the harbor looks like. You know, he could in theory. Take enforcement action against them for s- for saying, you know, y- you're supposed to have, your permit requires that you have. An attendant on duty and they're going to argue, but it's dead, nobody's coming out today. Um, I I don't think John would take enforcement action under those circumstances. But he could. Similarly, you could have it, the applicant who could come back, you know, after a few months of operation could say to us. Can we please drop the parking attendant on Sundays? We don't get that big of a crowd and that's just an added expense to our, you know, our overhead.
Yeah, we're not doing, we're not doing a Sunday brunch either, so that's why.
Exactly, right, right.
Well, we could be open to that. I mean, if it's little tweaks. I'm fine, I would, I would not want to open. A new public hearing on these, on such a condition unless it were really serious. You know, I don't. Your example.
Another thought. Another thought is to, you know, stick with the Thursday through Sunday, so we have some. Um, you know, more defined period of time when we expect them to be be busy and have an attendant. We could also say that, you know, this condition. Shall be reviewed along with the traffic assessment, it traffic and or the parking assessment. And if deemed not necessary, can, you know, can be modified.
Yeah. Along with Perry or or actually, we could use that as a, as a uh. As a qualifier for any of these conditions that they, you know, if they impact traffic or parking or whatever, they're all. Subject to review or or, you know. And uh as as part of that.
Yeah, and 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 certainly, you know, it uh. If i- i- if the concern is, you know, it's going to be dead in January, you could always just say, you know. Parking employed Thursday through Friday, you know, in the month of May through September or something like that as well, you know? I mean.
I I think we can learn as we go along on a couple of these conditions um. You know, so that they're they're not onerous or they don't start to interfere with operations. They really deal with. Traffic and, you know, and patron load. And it's pretty hard to anticipate because I don't know and I'm not even sure they know exactly who's going to be managing the restaurant and what kind of. Patrons are going to be drawing, fine dining is a pretty broad. Brush. Sounds good, but you know, I mean, anyway, okay, I'll take that. What else?
Like the other two things I looked at anyways was. Um. On under nineteen, we do mention. And again, I I know why we do, but the last sentence says, you know, daytime special functions on restaurant premises are not allowed. It's kind of period, you know? And. I mean, I don't know if that's us. So I look at, you look at the coffee shop seven to three, the restaurant five to ten, right? So could 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 somebody have a a Saturday um? You know? Uh. Function from three to three to five, or is that something that this board feels like is over the top, you know, because I'm just trying to prevent.
Yeah.
You know, them continuously coming back to us.
Let me hear from the board.
Language.
Yeah, let me, let me hear from the board because um.
Like we've thrown around brunch and we've talked about these different things, all of which. Can't happen, you know? Based on the hours.
Yeah. Board members.
I don't think we want to. Be too fine on what the. Applic- what the owners can and can't do with their. With their um operations. I think limiting the hours so that there's that. Kind of gap in the middle for the cl- lot to clear out. Before the fine dining hours come in, this makes sense. It's a practical approach to things. I. Can't imagine that the um. That the operators are going to screw that up and have a bunch of cars come in in between those hours so that people can't come in for the. Fine dining at night, it's just.
Okay.
I think we've done what we need to do here to solve the parking problem to the greatest extent that we can. And I think that the applicants have been extremely cooperative and helpful in doing that and um. You know, I think we should just trust them to run their business. If there's a problem, we'll find out and. We can fix it later, but. I think for now, we've done a pretty good job.
I I can easily take that out, you know, number twenty was one that was implied by um. The neighbors of Fulton at all, um, but I think it makes a lot of sense. I can understand why they wouldn't want to see this become. Let's say a sports bar or just a, you know, a watering hole. Uh, until ten at night or or something.
I thought we were pretty solid on twenty.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, I'm good there.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. That we are being prescriptive, but that's okay because I think. It's part of the fine dining restaurant. It shouldn't be carved out as a separate. Separate format.
And then my only pause on both sixteen and seventeen D. Or.
All right.
Or that they. You know, they deal with parking, so that's why, but the. But they deal with capacity as well, but they each call for like a special hearing that's in front of us and. Typically like a um. A a license premise. That was going to come talk about capacity and whatnot would would more speak to. Like the select board and and it would tie to their. Liquor license or something, you know, some is having problems even with like live music or or or. Violations going on or whatever. I think it would be like the select board and the liquor license that would do the best at kind of saying, hey. Instead of ninety-six, we're going to have to make. Change, you know, I, so I wondered on both six, in that, do do we say like? Like, would we host the meeting or would we participate in the meeting um with the?
I think it's our decision. And we'd have to, well, we could, I suppose, have a joint thing. Sixteen does not bother me at all. I think it's important. Uh frankly, uh if they're going to change a use. Uh, a scope particularly, um and and is likely to have an impact on number parking spaces, they've got to come before us. Maybe, you know, maybe they'll come before us with a change in use and a plan. To accommodate that.
Yeah, I think both of these are are focused on parking, which is our jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction, yeah. I mean, if they start to get too rowdy, that's a, that's a question for the police and the selectmen, you know, in terms of licensing. But and 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 we can't opine in that really. But let's say after six months seventeen, sixteen doesn't bother me really, Matt, the sixth. So we're saying six months afterwards, um as long as it incorporates encompasses a full summer season, it may be. Longer than six months after operations start. Does that bother you? At seventeen.
Yeah, no, no, I guess I'm good with with that. I mean, I guess with the trigger of it being. Parking, you know?
Yeah, if if it looks like modifications have to be made in parking because of something. And it's a, it's a legitimate traffic study. And I'm sure the the public safety folks, the the police and fire would chime in. Um, I think we'd have to. Have to open it up. Carolyn, am I being too?
No, I think that's exactly the 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 point of it, but the point of having them do this study is that um. If it turns out that this site does not work with the parking spaces that they've provided. I don't know what the solution is, but we have to come back to the drawing board and figure out. Where do we go from here? Do they um? Get rid of a use? Do they reduce some seats? Um.
Or do they find additional offsite parking?
Or do they find additional parking somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, I can see what we haven't crossed this bridge, but the town doesn't, and Charlie's on the the town parking. Study committee or whatever it is, but we um really don't have have a have a good plan for. Parking in general in the village or or on the waterfront, but I could envision. Uh, this being successful, uh, you know, it's an asset. And the only fly in the ointment is a lack of parking and the town says, look, we've got to do something. We, I'm making this up. But we have some town land. We'll go to town meeting and try to repurpose some of it to benefit everybody in the harbor, not just. The fine dining restaurant, but. I I can see them doing it because most towns, in fact. Certainly as a boater, I mean, they had this public parking right down at the parking, you know. By by the waterfront. You don't have to drive five minutes. Most towns and and I could see us. Evolving in that direction. I don't want to. I don't have a solution, but I can see the town being open-minded about. Providing public parking for all a water access. You know, maybe there's a kayak launch. Thing and people need a place to park and they're not doing the fine dining restaurant, but. The town wants to encourage that kind of activity. So maybe the town spends a little money. I don't know. Yeah, I I view this as as evolving or or in a in flux and I think we've got a. If we froze time for the, and I I'll stop talking now, but if we froze time for the next twenty-five years. That would be a disservice. I mean, we would end up with a mess. We we need to plan as a town going forward, how we can accommodate more traffic, foot traffic. Um, automobile traffic and probably uh boating traffic. Smarter people than I can do that. I'll be in the home. You know, you can visit me on Sundays. When when it's at its peak in the afternoon.
Only if we can get in the parking lot, Woody.
Oh, my God. Now, now I've got something to worry about for the next two years. Okay. Uh, any any other uh conditions? Uh, Charlie, you've got your finger raised.
Our way around this uh is to change seventeen C. Uh. Which if you have a pattern of complensive observation, uh, then you then we can call for a study.
Yeah.
But is it wide open and uh we aren't committed to any Thursdays or Januaries or whatever we want to?
I think giving them some guidance is useful, but I I hear you. I mean. It can be just, you can have a condition that says, and the zoning board will. Conduct studies and review parking uh in the event it needs to be expanded, but that doesn't give anybody much. Guidance or or any, I mean, that's that's too open-ended, I think.
Woody, I had one.
Go ahead.
Issue on thirteen.
Yeah.
Third sentence, third line says. Because of the concerns about parking in the vicinity, the board has chosen to develop reasonable employee parking requirements. I'm concerned, we don't really have the express authority to do that. I think it would be better if we worded it to say, the board has encouraged the applicant to develop. Reasonable play parking requirements and then.
And cross out employee, delete employee and just say reasonable parking requirements?
No, no, it's. To that part is good, it's just I would change it to the board has encouraged. Just take out chosen to. Put in the, was encouraged, the applicant to develop reasonable employee parking requirements. And then the rest of that paragraph sets it out as a condition, so. Because they did agree.
Yeah, okay. Alrighty. Anything else? Carolyn, what happens if somebody has a brain uh? Uh, a brainstorm tomorrow morning? And they say, my God, I want to change number seven. Is it too late?
Well, if you want to have one final, if you want to have like one final opportunity at your October meeting. Um. You closed.
They're getting very.
We have to remember to change the.
I mean, it's been half a year.
Yeah, that's.
I I know, it's been a long time, just saying that you have ninety days from the close of the public hearing, which was in August. To actually file your decision, you know, vote and file your decision with the town clerk, so. You could kick this out October if you wanted to.
Good, Woody. I think. I mean, we've had an awful lot of opportunities to. You know. Look at this, think about it, tease it. Change it. And I think you worded Smith, everything that we talked about over the six months. Extremely well on this decision and it seems to me that everything that we thought was important. Is in here and everything that we thought we need to have some enforcement mechanism and conditions. Is in here and it's in here well. And I don't, I, you know, I just, I don't see the. The point in continuing.
Okay, I didn't mean to throw a, you know, hand in the gears, but I just raised the question. I I'd be comfortable approving it and saying, look, it's it's not, it's not a hundred percent. Right, I somewhere buried in here are are probably five percent. At least that we'd want to, uh, you know, a year from now, wish we hadn't said or wanted, want to change, but. I'd rather kind of have them have them get on with it and then experience what, how they operate and. What kind of enforcement or monitoring is needed, maybe very little, maybe a lot. I just don't know.
Woody, is the applicant permitted to come back to us, say in three years and say, I'd like to take it. I'd like to take a look at my special permit because a few of these conditions, we don't feel are necessary or they're not working right. Or we need them changed a little bit. Can they do that?
Well, Carolyn, couldn't we make that a condition or not?
That you don't even have to make it a condition. They could certainly, they could, they could come back. And they could, you know, they would have to request a, you know, file an application and and request a public hearing of the board. And yet you could modify the special permit to tweak any of these conditions, remove conditions that you don't think are necessary. You know, what I also see done sometimes is that. Sometimes the board will give some authority to say. Someone like John Hallen. Um, I, but you know, that can be a little bit. That can be a little bit complicated because, I mean, this is ultimately the board's decision. So if the board is going to reconsider something three years from now. I think it should be in the board's discretion to do so, but.
Okay, and nothing, and nothing.
You wanted to give some parameters to John Hallen, you could.
Okay, but nothing prevents the applicant or or the owner in this case to come back and say, look, some of these just aren't working.
Nothing, correct.
I would be.
My understanding is there's not like even a, because I I've actually done it on. Different situation in. About a year, like even less than a year's time, you know, there's not a, right, Carolyn, you don't have to wait. A certain time necessarily if you realize that there's a condition that's that's not working.
Correct.
And and so we don't have to even specify a timeframe. I mean, they can come back, as you say, Matt, in ten months or. Eight years, I suppose, I mean.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I think we could learn by by, they could learn by doing and and we could all learn and and I hope the town takes a. A comprehensive or a holistic view. A comprehensive or holistic view. Because this is not the only development that's going to go on in the harbor in our lifetimes. Okay, I got it. I will make these changes and um. So I'd make a motion that we.
Actually, do we do we add in the findings at the bottom, then, the decision? I know we have one, two, three, four, five, six, should we specify? Seven that any? Or did I miss it? Like, did any um? I guess.
I see alterations.
Modifications.
Number seven, eight, no.
Do the conditions would come back to the zoning board of appeals?
You better say that again. I was, I kind of talked over you and missed it.
Just should we add in there that modifications to the conditions should be directed back to the zoning board of appeals for review?
And I thought it was understood, but maybe not. Carolyn, is that useful?
I was gonna say, I I think that. I think that goes without saying, but if that gives the board a level of comfort, um you can, there's no harm in putting it in.
Okay, so that would be um. That wouldn't be a finding. That would be part of the decision, wouldn't it?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Seven, uh any modifications? Of conditions. Uh to board. For uh review. In a public hearing, okay. Yeah. So that we don't get into the, yeah, we've had a few situations, not with our current. Team. Where modifications were made, kind of. Ad hoc, okay, I'm comfortable with this. Mostly because I've. My eyes are crossed having written it. Um I make a motion to accept the decision on forty-six Border Street. Koha Koh Lobster LLC as amended and uh adjusted at tonight's hearing.
Second.
Okay, moving secondly, Woody Chitikai.
David Morrissey.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Okay, I, did we miss one person? We get all six votes?
Matt.
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 Matt Watkins, aye, yep.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. This is a. You know, I just have a have a kind of administrative question. Is there any value? I mean, I've saved every site plan, all seven of them, var- variants. Um is there any value in returning those to town hall or the applicant, or just should I just throw them away? I mean, this is an unusual number of uh. Uh materials.
Are they just the duplicates of what?
Yeah.
Town Hall already has?
Yeah, no, there's nothing original.
Oh, then I would think that if the town hall already has the copies, then we can shred them.
Great. All right. I will get this in tomorrow. Thank you all, and I'll see, oh, wait, two things. Could we approve the minutes uh of uh? Was it, is it July or which um?
August.
August fifteenth. I mean, they're 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 um. Um fairly brief, so I honestly didn't have any issues with it.
I didn't have any.
Any edits?
My hand should not be up.
Well, not hearing any edits, and if there are any, you could get them to Cassandra tomorrow, but I'll make a motion to approve the. Um minutes of August fifteenth.
Um, seconded.
Moving seconded, on favor, Woody Chitikai.
David Morrissey.
Anybody else?
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, great. Work with me in this.
I wasn't there.
Have Michael Dickey, aye.
Okay, all right, and then we also agreed, um but we should probably, do we need a vote about October fourth? To confirm that that's the date of our next hearing and November fifteenth, uh as far as we know. I would, I would certainly make.
It should be good for the fifteenth, that I think I return either. I'm out of town a few days, if you get back either the night of the fourteenth or the fifteenth. Let's keep it as is um.
Okay, we can always, yeah, I mean, there's two out, so we can always make a change. It's just critical that we keep our our voting quorum. So I made a motion for October fourth and November fifteenth as our next two meeting dates. Second, anybody?
I'll second this. Oh, okay, beat me to it. I'll I'll vote in favor then.
Okay, that's the first one. Okay, any other people in favor?
All right, Charlie Higginson.
Woody Chitikai.
Lee Darcey.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, that's, that's good. Do we have any other business um? I guess not.
You have to assign.
Yeah, we do have to make assignments for both uh one one sixty-seven Sawyer Street and one twenty-four.
Okay, I I'm accused of those, so you'll have.
I'll do one sixty-seven Sawyer Street.
Okay. Anyone? Looking to jump at one twenty-four South Main?
I can do that one um. So we're just waiting on the.
Nine seven eight, sure.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean. We continue to, I guess, if we, if we get a memorandum.
I'm sure we will.
Shortly, uh then, then I think we should draft a decision, obviously, if it comes in.
Okay, so I've got Lee down for the first. The Pescatoris and Dave, is that correct, for the patents? Okay.
Okay, and everything else is continued, and we have a very busy November.
Yeah, well, we don't know what's coming in between now and. Whenever, I'm sure there's stuff percolating.
There's nothing new for October.
Oh, great.
So.
Good.
You only have the three that you heard tonight.
Okay. I I kind of. Well, anyway, I I I thank John Hallen for his suggestion. Which was um timely. And I think the way Jeff was smiling, I think we may see something. So. Okay, I'll see you all. In in three weeks.
And David, you did a great job hanging in there. I hope you feel.
Thanks, Dave, yeah.
Feel better. Feel better, dude.
I know.
Bless your soul. All right, you guys.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.